Welcome to this evening's forum to hear from the candidates for the Encinitas City Council. I am Lois Martins, a member of League of Women Voters of North County San Diego, and I will be your moderator for this virtual candidates forum. And I do want to say a special thank you before we begin to the Encinitas Lucadia Town Council, who are sponsoring this evening's forum. Now, we believe that although we do miss something by not being in person, there are some advantages as well. Many more people who otherwise might not be able to attend in person will be able to view the candidates and their responses, enabling them to make a more informed decision when they fill out their ballots. Now assisting me this evening will be members of League of Women Voters of North County San Diego. Two members, Ronnie C. and Jackie Stone are question sorters. And Karen Pendergast is serving as our timer. Karen, would you introduce yourself to the audience, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Karen Pendergast, and I'll be your timer tonight. So I have these paddles here. And first of all, when it's 30 seconds left on your time allotted, I will show this one. And then when the 30 seconds is up and your time has gone, I will show this one, and you have time, you need to stop talking. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Hers is a very important job. I also want to give a special acknowledgement to Nancy Telford, our media coordinator, without whom this forum could not be held. And now we've asked that the candidates mute their mics, except when talking. And the chat function has been disabled by Nancy, so people cannot interrupt the forum. Before beginning with the business at hand, I would like to take a moment to say something about League of Women Voters. Our organization was founded in 1920 when women finally, after a very lengthy struggle, won the right to vote. And this year marks our 100-year anniversary, which we are celebrating virtually, which is not quite the way we had it planned. Its purpose today is very much the same as it was in the beginning, to promote active, informed citizen participation at all levels of government through education and advocacy. Now, while we cherish our historic name, for some years now, both women and men are welcome as members. The League never supports or opposes any political party or any candidate for public office. We do, in some instances, take a position on a particular issue, but only after a thorough study has been completed. League of Women Voters moderates candidates forums all across the country using a format that most people find fair, balanced, and yet informative. We ask candidates to defer from any personal attacks, but rather keep to the issues. This forum is being recorded. Video recording streaming of this forum is limited to authorized entities only and must be shared in its entirety as per FCC regulations. Now, we ask the public to submit questions online before the forum, so our question sorters could review the questions to avoid redundancy, questions of a derogatory nature, or those that are not pertinent to this particular election. The questions have then been organized into categories of a similar nature to avoid repetition and to assure that the topics of greatest interest are addressed. To comply with the state mandate, Encinitas voters will now select their councilperson by district rather than by voting in an at-large election. Representatives for two of Encinitas' four districts are to be determined in the November 3 election. Those districts are District 1 and District 2. Candidates running in District 1 are Toni Krantz and Alex Riley. Candidates running in District 2 are Kelly Hinsey and Susan Turney. Now, the candidates have been informed that they each have two minutes for an opening statement, two minutes for a closing statement, and one minute to respond to the questions. Our timekeeper, excuse me, our timekeeper will hold up a yellow paddle when 30 seconds remain and a red paddle when time is up. All candidates will respond to each question. And prior to the beginning of this event, the order for speaking was determined randomly. So now, candidates, please silence your cellphones, mute yourself when not speaking, and please adhere to the time constraints. Now for our opening statements. And for District 1, we will first hear from Alex Riley. Mr. Riley?
Thank you. Thanks for everyone that tunes in and watches this. I'm Alex Riley. For 19 years, I served the public as a lifeguard for the San Diego Fire Rescue Department. Protecting lives, property, and the environment was a true calling for me. And once again, I see the need to serve and stand up for the residents of my hometown as Encinitas faces many changes now and into the future. I feel that high-density projects should not be wedged into our residential neighborhoods. And just yesterday, an article in the New Tribune called into question the entire methodology used by the state and their housing targets were significantly inflated. I will prioritize the immediate review of the emergency disaster plan. Given these years' wildfires, Encinitas must form a plan for a permanent and properly-staffed and equipped fire station eliminate. Road use has to maintain a balance for all users to safely reach their destination, which includes pedestrian ADA access. We need solutions for long-term problems such as the flooding in Lucadia. Before spending upwards of $50 million on streetscape, Encinitas must prioritize these three projects. First, follow the cities of Solana Beach and Carlsbad and lower the tracks. The safety, walkability, congestion, and economic benefits have already been proven. Once again, flooding in Lucadia. We need infrastructure, not Band-Aids. And finally, I want to review the specific plan for North 101 in Lucadia. These are my main concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. And next, we'll hear from Toni Krantz.
Yes, good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and those joining us by video. It's unfortunate that we're in this pandemic, but we're making the best of it, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the voters. I've had the opportunity and honor to serve on the city council for the last two terms, almost eight years. And I think we've accomplished a great deal in that period of time. The city is headed in the right direction. It's on sound fiscal footing in spite of the pandemic economy. We have some of the safest neighborhoods in the county. And our public safety with fire and marine safety are some of the best. So I am here tonight to ask you for the opportunity to serve more, four more years, this time as a representative of District 1. I have previously been serving and elected at large, so it's going to be a shift in focus. And I look forward to that. And also to seeing some really important projects completed. One of those very important projects is this Lucadia Streetscape, which has been in planning for approximately 15 years, a whole bunch of community input. And it's unfortunate that people keep saying it's a $50 million project because they have no basis, in fact, for stating that. So I look forward to continuing this conversation and asking for your vote. Again, I'm Toni Krantz, and I hope to continue serving you as a District 1 representative.
Thank you, Mr. Krantz. Next, we will hear from the two candidates for District 2. First up is Kelly Hinsey.
You got it right. So good evening, everybody. I'd like to first thank the Encinitas Lucadia Town Council for bringing us together in this candidate forum despite the challenges. And I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for bringing us this virtual format. And hello to everybody at home who's watching. I hope that you and your loved ones are staying well during this particularly challenging moment in time. My name's Kelly Hinsey. I'm deputy mayor in the city of Encinitas, and I'm running to represent District 2, officially named Old Encinitas, which is actually a misnomer in that the district also includes South Lucadia. This is the first time that District 2 residents will be electing our own representative, and I am so honored to be a candidate in this race. I'm a lifelong Encinitas resident. I'm a graduate of San Diego Academy, Pacific View, Polacki Central. And I'm proud to represent a district that I've grown up in and hope to grow old in. Our community is facing unprecedented hardships: pandemic, climate change, historic civil unrest, local business under strain, and on top of it all, an incompetent and heartless national response. Now, more than ever, we need strong local leaders that we can rely on. As your deputy mayor, I've fought for safe, walkable routes to school, healthy oceans and beaches, strengthening our small business economy, and ensuring your exceptional quality of life. My mom, Julie Hinsey, is a former elementary school teacher at Polacki Central, who's now living with physical disabilities and is using a wheelchair to get around town. She taught me that while change is inevitable, with resilience, compassion, and a vision for the future, we can overcome any challenge. I'm proudly endorsed by the Sierra Club, the League of Conservation Voters, and the Encinitas Firefighters Association, among others. I invite you to see the complete list at kellyforencinitas.com. I'm a third-generation Encinitas resident, and I know how special this town is. I'll never stop fighting for Encinitas, and I'll never stop fighting for you. Please vote for me, Kelly Hinsey, to represent District 2 on Encinitas City Council, honor before November 3.
Thank you. And lastly, we will hear from Susan Turney.
Thank you. My name is Susan Turney. And let me back up and thank the League and thank BL 101 or Main Street for hosting this. It's very generous to accommodate us when we can't meet in person. I'm running for the District 2 seat on the Encinitas City Council. For more than 15 years, I fought alongside residents citywide on variety of projects and proposals that affect our community character. I promote, I work to promote local control and demand responsible spending. I led the 2013 passage of the Prop. A Right-to-Vote Initiative that gives residents a right to vote on Encinitas' growth. Residents First is my approach to all Encinitas issues, whether considering development projects, flooding, and deferred road repairs, and infrastructure maintenance. I believe in representation that concentrates on setting common sense, fiscally responsible policy for Encinitas. I hear from residents that some of our most pressing concerns are housing, public safety, and government transparency. The influence of developers and state housing authorities on our town is actually pretty appalling. But we can change this, and we can preserve our neighborhoods, increase our stock of affordable housing, build fewer overall units, and minimize traffic impacts. We can do this all and still comply with state law and still keep our Prop. A right to vote. Public safety must be put ahead of other considerations. Encinitas faces a record number of lawsuits from residents because of council-approved developments that are projected to worsen emergency response times, increase flooding, and prevent time we escape from wildfires. The publicist business should be conducted in the public. I, and I have chose, and I have ideas for how to improve transparency in Encinitas. And I find that often residents are the last to find out about projects and proposals that affect them directly. Thank you.
And thank you. Now, that concludes the beginning of our forum. Now comes the fun part. You get to respond to the questions. Each candidate will have one minute to respond. And since this is a forum, not a debate, extra time for rebuttal is not provided. We provide equal time for each of the candidates. And so we're going to go to our first question. And by the way, you have no idea how many questions your residents turned in for this.
I do.
Now, a lot of them are redundant. A lot of them are on the same topics. Nonetheless, there were many, many questions. We are going to begin our responses to the questions with Ms. Turney. And the first question says, "What steps are you planning to take to help control the Airbnb problem in Encinitas and especially your district of Encinitas?" Ms. Turney?
Sure, thank you. I know that party Airbnbs are a big problem. I have friends in my district, outside of my district, who have reported to me that there are parties going on in homes where the owner is not on site. They rent to large groups, and it seems to be a hot potato at City Hall where the people call for help, code sends them to the sheriff. The sheriff says can't really do anything. And during COVID, it's especially concerning because I've seen video of groups with no masks on, out of doors, drinking and disturbing the neighborhood peace. So I would put a moratorium on non-occupier-owned Airbnb's, if, as long as that's possible to work with. I think Tasha has mentioned this as something she's trying to do, and I would love to partner on that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hinsey, would you go next, please?
Sure. I don't support a moratorium on short-term vacation rentals because I've seen other cities try to do that. And actually, you incur the wrath of the Coastal Commission. So what that would actually do is it would expose our city to a lot of lawsuits, and it would create additional legal problems that I don't think our city needs. What I do support are owner-occupied, short-term vacation rentals. My mom has one, and it's been a wonderful way for her to connect with people from all over the world, not during COVID, but under normal circumstances. I unfortunately live next to one that, for a time, did not behave well. And there were guests up to 30 per night staying there. So I worked closely with the city and the city manager at that time to get that, that specific rental into compliance. And before my time, I think that the city adopted a pretty good policy on it. I think that the problem that we're having now is enforcement. And so I do support increased enforcement for making sure that the vacation rentals registered in our city are in compliance and that that is enforced.
Thank you. Mr. Krantz, would you go next, please?
Yes, thank you. I think that what we need to do is redirect the transient occupancy tax that we get from short-term vacation rentals towards a more proactive enforcement. We do have a code enforcement department, and it's historically been reactive, which means that neighbors who are being disturbed are having to report the disturbances. And so my preference would be to start having a proactive approach to code enforcement. Because nuisance, we have nuisance laws on the books, and these Airbnb, short-term vacation rental properties that are a nuisance need to be addressed. And taking action with, through the code enforcement department is the correct way to do that. So I would support that. It is something that's been on our radar. Now that we have the housing element issues somewhat behind us, it's time to get on with addressing this problem.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, Mr. Riley, would you respond? Unmute yourself.
Yeah, there's one on my street, and it was kind of odd to hear a pool party during the height of COVID. I think there's other ways. Other cities have already dealt with this, and I think we could follow their lead, have a, have a tracking system for nuisance calls and, you know, one, two, three strikes, and then maybe some fines. But it shouldn't be causing a disruption in our neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we'll go to the, the next question. And this one is pretty lengthy. It's about beaches and bluffs. Our beaches are one of our great resources. How will you balance the needs of the beach-going public with needs of the bluff-top property owners? Should we armor the bluff for safety's sake or allow the bluffs to naturally recede? Can you find a middle ground? What about sand replenishment, especially in District 1? Now, I know that is really a lengthy question to answer in a minute. Let's make this a two-minute response. Is that okay with everybody? I think we need a little more time than a minute. And we are going to begin this time with Mr. Krantz.
Well, it's unfortunate, but that's a question that I really am not at liberty to really address. The city's being sued by the estates of the three women who have perished so disastrously at Grandview Beach. So unfortunately, I'm going to have to limit my comments on this particular issue. And so accept my apologies for that, and we can move on.
Okay, thank you. I understand your dilemma there. Mr. Riley, would you respond, please?
Well, obviously, public safety is very important to me. I've worked at Black Speech off and on for many years, and I saw the slides. We would always make sure we warn people away from the cliffs. Our beaches aren't in a very natural state right now due to the blockage of the outflow of sand from the mountains and through the watersheds and lagoons. So I think sand replenishment, that's a, that's a good start. For some reason, we're not going to be doing it between Grandview and Beacons, where it's most needed. But as far as armoring, I think that should be a last-ditch effort. But we do have to weigh out safety. But removing plants that are heavy in weight down the cliffs, non-native plants, a water intrusion from our flooding issues caused these falls as well. And I don't think we should be in a situation where we have to have, worry about falling objects when we go to the beach. So obviously, safety's number one. And I think there's a combined effort we can make to make them safer again.
Okay, thank you. We'll go now to the District 2 candidates, and we'll start with Ms. Turney.
Yes. So first of all, I want to start with a bill that's been proposed. I know that it has had rewording of the language, so that language specifically on seawalls and armoring has been removed. So that's, that's good news there. What's disturbing to me is that since the accident, it's been just over a year, I believe. I, nothing has been done that I know of in a real way to protect the public. So the lifeguards, as far as I understand from people who have been on the beaches there and observed, the lifeguards are not instructing anyone to stay out of, away from the bluff. We don't see increased signage there. And I actually looked at the lawsuit, and what I saw there was that the city has had direction over the years, going back as far as 1988, to take action. And none of the action has been taken. For example, the city was told that around the stairway, we needed an 80-foot buffer on either side of the stairway. For some reason, the city put in just 35 feet. So a significant portion of the bluff was left unprotected against water seepage. In 1991, the Coastal Commission approved reinforced concrete, and they actually conditioned the work permit to remove the heavy ice plant that contributes to the erosion and pulling down of the material. The city was supposed to revegetate with drought-resistant plants. That didn't happen. And finally, the city was told they needed to monitor, over time, the erosion rate to ensure that no extra measures needed to be taken. None of these protective measures have been taken. So I see it as a, you know, work between the city and between the public. Really, we need to protect the public, number one. That's got to come first.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Hinsey.
So not a day goes by that I don't mourn for the loss of the Davis family. The catastrophic bluff failure that resulted in irreplaceable loss of life is also reflected in a loss of spirit in our community. I'm recused from the suit that faces the city regarding this issue, but as council, a current council member, I'm also not able to speak at length. But what I can say is that the home that I live in is owned by my grandmother. It's a bluff-top residence, and she's owned it for a long time. And there are a lot of challenges that you face as a stakeholder, as part of the bluff-top community. So I can say that the 50-year sand replenishment program has moved forward this year for the first time in a long time thanks to the city of Encinitas and the city of Solana Beach, working closely with our representative at the federal level, Congressman Mike Levin. So that project this year has gone from the pre-construction, design, engineering phase. And that is, that reflects a big difference from last year. So that project, we have a local match. We've met that local match for funding. And now we can count on increased resources towards that project from the federal government. And what that project will do is it will, over the next 50 years from the time that sand's delivered on our beach as early as 2024, it will bring sand in phases back to the community of Lucadia and Encinitas. And what it does is it creates wide sandy beaches that have the effect of keeping wave erosion from reaching the bottom of the bluff. So with a wide sandy beach, the beach itself can handle the erosive action of waves, and it can move it away from the foot of the bluff. So it's helpful not only to create additional recreational space, but it also creates additional habitat, and it reduces impacts of coastal erosion. So I've been happy to work on that project alongside Congressman Levin, and I look forward to bringing it to fruition.
Thank you. And now for our next question. And this has to do with homelessness. Do you think the homeless parking lot has truly helped the majority of homeless in Encinitas? What suggestions do you have for helping the homeless in our town? And we will begin our response this time with Ms. Turney. Unmute yourself.
Guilty. Yeah, so what I'm seeing now with the, specific to the, the safe parking lot on Saxony, there's no accountability. And so I don't know what the numbers are. I know the public is told they can go look on the JFS website. But the neighbors who were initially concerned about the parking lot to begin with were promised regular quarterly reporting, and the city decided to cancel, cancel that. I understand folks are staying in hotel rooms, so they get vouchers. And I'm not sure about the length of time that that, that covers folks. I don't like hearing the captain, the sheriff's captain, reporting on statistics as he says, "within parameters." I would like to hear the full report and understand what the full extent of the issue is. And so while it's, it's, I'm not against people having a safe place to park, of course, it's, I can't imagine being in that position out without any protection. At the same time, we have people sleeping in the train station, in alleyways in downtown Encinitas, and I'm hearing complaints from downtown residents. And so I don't think we're quite helping everyone. We're not reaching, actually, a lot of the people who we should be partnering with cities to help.
Thank you. Thank you. And next, Ms. Hinsey.
So the Safe Parking Program, I will say, before I start answering the question, is a program. So most people think that it's just an empty lot that one person could pull into at, on a whim and stay there overnight. It's actually a program that offers services to people who are willing to pre-enroll, be vetted, and then be accepted into the program. So it's not designed to address our existing highly-visible homeless, so the chronic homeless problem that we have here in Encinitas and all over the state of California. It's meant as an intervention technique to prevent the downward spiral towards homelessness. So at the time that council received an update on the program, which was in May, since the start of the program, we'd had 44 adults take part and nine children. We had 15 Encinitas residents who used the lot and 29 North County residents. And so to me, these are signs of success. When, when the Sheriff Captain Taft reported on his, his determination surrounding the fear that crime would be increased due to safe parking, he said in his words...
Thank you. I'm going to have to stop you. You ran out of time. Sorry. And we'll go now to Mr. Riley. Would you respond, please?
Certainly. In my prior job, I had to be kind of the, the last resort when dealing with homelessness as a, my position in law enforcement as a lifeguard. We, we still have an issue where we don't have any metrics on the parking lot. I mean, what Ms. Hinsey said is good to know, but it's hard to find. And again, it doesn't do anything for some of the people we've seen in our community for a long time that are homeless and unsheltered. So I'd like to work with the county and the proper levels of government to help tackle this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Krantz?
Yes, it, the program is working. And it is, the data is available. It's used at the JFS website. And so it's posted every week and gives you all the numbers that you are interested in finding about how many people are using the parking lot. And the Safe Parking Program was never intended to address, to solve the homeless problem in Encinitas. We have a long way to go to address homelessness in Encinitas. We are currently wrapping up the process of getting a homeless action plan together. And when that is completed, expect some concrete steps towards implementing the actions that are outlined in that. And indeed, that does include working with the county because the county is, has the public health department here in our region. And I know this is, was important for Alex because it was the first meeting that he attended when, when it was approved. So that was, you know, clearly something pretty important to him. I voted against it at that time.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Ran out of time there. Okay, we're going on to the next question. And again, this is a lengthy one. Given state housing laws and HCD's identification of... Given state housing laws and HCD's identification of Prop A as an impediment to Encinitas's future compliance, what experience do you have that demonstrates your ability to find lawful, effective strategies to increase the supply of smaller, more affordable housing and compliance with state mandates? And with that, we will begin with Mr. Krantz.
So the challenge of complying with state law has been with the city of Encinitas since incorporation. I saw a HCD Housing Element Review Letter from nineteen ninety that included an admonishment that having a voting, for voting on upzoning was going to be an impediment to construction of affordable housing. And it nonetheless was a part of the housing element, has always been a part of the housing element. The only thing that Prop A did was codify it in a vote and make it impossible to change without another vote. And I support changing it with another vote to allow for any city council, any future council, to meet state law without having to go to a vote, so that we can avoid these lawsuits that have cost us millions of dollars.
Thank you. Mr. Riley.
Well, I have a much different take on that. Like I said, the article yesterday in the Union Tribune really calls into question the numbers we're getting from the very top, and it's like computer programming, garbage in, garbage out. I think, I think we should review, get the real numbers, and probably go back and go back and look at the properties that have been upzoned, because we may not need these numbers after all. But once again, if there's going to be lawsuits, I want to be on the side of the residents. And I would, if I was on the council, I would vote to join Coronado and push back against the state.
Thank you. And now for District Two, Ms. Hinsey, would you go first?
Well, that's an interesting question, because what I, I'm hearing actually asked was, what experience do you have preserving affordable housing or creating affordable housing in Encinitas? So I'll talk about the experience that I have, and one is that I served as a board member on the Encinitas Preservation Association. And this group is the, we're the stewards of the Encinitas Boathouses, which are a treasured monument to our past. And the community has come together to save those boathouses, so that they'll be here for the next generation to enjoy. What the city did was they, they used in Lufi's to purchase four affordable units behind the boathouses. So that created affordable units while preserving our public trust. The other experience I have is with the granny flats. It was a proud day to be able to receive an award from the League of Cities, the Helen Putnam Award, and stand at the table and have people from all over California coming to our table to ask our city how we achieved such a successful program to create affordable granny flats.
Okay, thank you. And we go on to our next question. And this has to do with climate change. As a city council member, how best would you address our climate crisis and its effect on Encinitas?
Excuse me?
Ask.
Excuse me, I think Susan. I think Susan had a comment. I was not able to respond to that question, the last question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought I had asked you. Yes, please, Susan, I apologize.
Sure. So we have not had a compliant housing element yet, so I have not been able to make that happen. However, I have seen two deceptive plans put before voters that cause the voters to say, no, measures T and U. And I was in the room, many, many hours of testimony by residents, by city, by the city's experts. We have our own consulting expert with HCD, with the state, who told this, that this council exactly how to pass a compliant housing element. He said, you put in front of voters a plan that does not give away an extra inch in height, an extra, less inch, less in setbacks, no more density, no more parcels than the state law requires, present the residents with the minimum, and that is how you pass a housing element update with a vote of the people required. Because other cities, up to twenty cities in California, have a Prop A vote required, and they managed to do it, and we can too. We just need to look at best practices and follow the advice of our own consultants.
Thank you, and I apologize again for omitting you on that. Now we will go to our next question, and it's still on climate change. As a city council member, how best would you address our climate crisis and its effect on Encinitas? And I'm going to begin this one with Ms. Turney. Unmute yourself, please.
Yeah, thank you. So as far as climate change, affecting climate change, I believe climate change is real, and I believe it begins at home. So when we have runoff, for example, coming from Lucadia Park, being pumped untreated over onto the beach, that's not a good start. When we have the Lucadia Streetscape predict, the EIR predicting that idling cars from reduced lanes, lanes are going to increase greenhouse gases, that's not a great start either. I really believe changes for climate change begin here at home. We've got a Levenheim Truck, Truck Line going to run into the tens of millions. The manhole covers are actually right now leaking raw sewage into Santa La, excuse me, Santa La Hova Lagoon. And so how would I affect climate change? I would start right here in Encinitas, making the necessary repairs that have gone unaddressed for years.
Thank you. Ms. Hinsey.
The recent fires certainly broadened my scope of the threats to our city. It's a sobering experience that I'm taking extremely seriously. As to how I would address these effects, you know, on-road transportation is still the city's highest producer of emissions at fifty-eight percent of our total GHGs. So to reduce our emissions and meet our climate action plan targets, we need to implement the city's active transportation plan, which creates options for people to move around the city without having to use their car. And I will say that this is the top request that we get as a city council member. I want to be able to walk to school. I want to be able to get to the park without my car. And so being able to do that is a natural fit. Another really good project that we will be implementing in the next couple of years is a shuttle service, which I would like to re-envision as a flexible fleet, that the city could help, the city could implement, and that would actually save us three hundred sixty-five thousand vehicle miles traveled in twenty twenty, had we had it up and running by now, and eight hundred seventy-five thousand by twenty thirty. So these are.
Thank you. I'm sorry, you've run out of time. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Krantz, would you respond, please?
Yes, I'm very proud of the Climate Action Plan that the city council has adopted. It took a lot of years of work to put it together, and it has measurable, it has metrics that we have been following with many of the projects that we have been implementing. It has, we, part of, one of the things that we accomplished as part of the Climate Action Plan was our Community Choice Energy Program. And it will give us the opportunity as a community to purchase more renewable electricity. And so I'm looking forward to that being online in the next year. And we will continue to implement the goals in the Climate Action Plan. We will do everything that we can to create mode shift, so that people that are currently finding it necessary to drive their cars across town or in town for errands will feel safer on a bicycle or walking. So those are some of the projects that have been a high priority for me during my service on the council, and I will continue to emphasize those projects, including Streetscape.
Thank you. And Mr. Riley, would you respond?
Yeah, I think electric cars are our future, and we saw some news about that again today. If we're going to have electric cars, they need a parking space and a place to plug in. And the city's lax requirements for developers to build adequate parking is a big problem, because we still rely on our cars no matter what in Southern California. Furthermore, our local transportation isn't that great. We don't have proper ADA or mobility available, bus stops, and when it rains, they turn to mud. So if we want people to reduce their car trips, we got to give them better options.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we'll go to the next question. And this has to do with infrastructure. Where do you stand concerning the upcoming Lucadia infrastructure projects? Not just Streetscape, but the Roundabout, the Northern Rail Corridor Crossing, and the Lucadia Drainage Project? And Mr. Riley, would you begin, please?
Sure, that's a good question. I think we have to have the best infrastructure and build. That's got to be the basis that everything else is built upon. So we do need to address the flooding issues once and for all. Our pipes are overloaded. Whenever it rains, like Ms. Turney said, we pump untreated street runoff straight in the ocean. And a lot of the things we've been hearing about from North Lucadia, they've been talking about that for decades. So we need real metrics and deadlines and dedicated money to get things fixed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Krantz.
Um, the projects that are currently slated for Lucadia are a big part of what I've been working on for the last four years, and I'm looking forward to getting them constructed. The El Portal Undercrossing was a big project, and we got all the agencies together, the Coastal Commission, the Sandag, CPUC, NCTD, and we got it done, and construction will soon start. I'm looking forward to putting another crossing in, in Northern Lucadia. And so we'll get started on that right away. Streetscape is going to be a huge improvement for the infrastructure. It's in fact going to provide bus stops that people don't have to stand in the dirt. So that's a, a big reason why we should be moving forward with that project. Ultimately, the, the stormwater issue is a huge problem that has vexed councils since incorporation. The county left us with infrastructure that was woefully inadequate. And so the cost to make up for that is significant, though Rick Engineering Report from many years ago was a hundred billion dollar project.
Thank you. I'm sorry, you're out of time. Ms. Hinsey.
This is my, one of my favorite topics to discuss, because I've been involved with the El Portal Undercrossing for the better part of ten years. And when I was a little child, I used to walk to school with my mom, who was a teacher at Paul Leckie, and we would illegally cross the tracks. And I'm a rule follower to my core, and that really upset me to have to illegally cross the tracks. So this infrastructure update is such a wonderful example of the city of Encinitas working with our regional partners to build the infrastructure we needed a hundred years ago and the infrastructure that will carry us into the next hundred years. The, the rail crossing provides drainage on site. It provides pumps to manage some of our stormwater. It creates a critical connection we don't currently have. I'd love to see that in Northern Lucadia. I will champion that project as well on council for the next four years, and I would do everything I can so that our highway becomes quieter, friendly, more walkable, more rollable, and more welcoming to the families who deserve a street that works for them.
Thank you. Ms. Turney.
Yes, well, a true capital improvements project is long overdue. There was a twenty-twelve grand jury investigation that found that our infrastructure along the corridor is completely wanting. We've not fully, we've not actually ever addressed area drainage. The solution so far proposes just simply connecting more pipes to an already stressed system. Streetscape is not going to address systemic flooding. The thirteen million dollar underpass, while it's wonderful that we have access for that money, we could have had four plug-in, plug-and-play, so to speak, underpasses between El Portal and La Costa Boulevard. So I'm sure it's going to be very attractive, but it doesn't provide the access that we might otherwise have had. We shouldn't proceed with Streetscape at all until the most basic of our needs are covered. And shift that money, I don't, it's going to cost a lot of, a lot of money to do it right, but it should be done right. We've never really gotten a handle on the price, the price tag, so I think that needs to be addressed first.
Thank you. Oh, I think you really. I think we saw the wrong paddle for a moment there. Okay, going on to the next question. What type of citizen oversight do you envision under your leadership? And we're going to begin this time with Ms. Hinsey.
What type of citizen oversight?
Correct.
Hmm, I don't know what that question means, but I'll take a stab at it, and I think citizen oversight might mean engagement of the community. Perhaps it means, how are we properly managing the desires of our citizens to make sure that we're acting in a way that we're accomplishing the projects that they want? So we're, I think the city excels at this. We do a lot of planning. We do a lot of opportunities for public input, open houses to discuss the different projects that we have on the table. And so, you know, outreach is the thing that I love most about this job. It's talking to people. It's hearing about their experiences and how we can do better, and things that are working and things that aren't working. So hopefully, that's what citizen oversight is.
I just asked the questions. Okay, Ms. Turney, would you respond, please?
Sure, yes. I support bringing back the cabs, the citizen advisory boards. This means that each of the communities are represented by a small group of resident groups that come to the city, to the various commissions, and really keep the city apprised as to what is going on on their streets, in their neighborhoods, so that we don't have to collect information through online channels that are not always user-friendly or large-scale outreach events. These were really great working groups, and we had them for every, I know actually several people who served on them. They absolutely loved them, and they felt like they really smoothed the relationship between the residents and City Hall.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Krantz, would you respond, please?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind considering the cabs coming back, but they were disbanded for a reason, and we would need to learn a little bit more about that. Many of the issues that we have in our city are citywide or at least a region. So if you have a cab for Lucadia, and it's a, it's a matter that crosses over into Encinitas, it could create some conflicts there. We have some outstanding commissions that the public serves on, and I really admire the folks who step up to serve on those. We have an Arts Commission, a Traffic and Public Safety Commission, and, you know, Planning Commission, Senior Citizen Commission. I would like to propose that we have a Public Health Commission, and that would be a group that would focus on issues related to mental health and homelessness and, and the sort of things that we're dealing with extensively right now. So I would propose that we, I plan to propose a Public Health Commission as an expansion of what we already have, which is a fairly robust community input.
Thank you. And Mr. Riley, would you respond, please?
Yeah, I think oversight on its most simple level is the residents know what's, what's going on in the city and be able to participate in the process. So getting the word out, probably extending some of the notification distances more than five hundred feet. Oftentimes, people still don't know of a project happening right next to them until ground is broken. I'd like to see more in shorter council meetings, so we can raise the participation. And I'd like to get out the word in different ways. We could go low-tech and have bulletin boards in the parks, trailheads at the top of our beach trails, and again, low-tech, let's have more forums for the, for the community to come together and hear what's going on and check in with the council. So I think more participation would instantly give us the oversight.
Okay, thank you. This next question, different subject. What is your stance on Measure H and sales of marijuana in Encinitas? And Mr. Riley, would you begin with that response?
Yeah, I think it's best left up to the community. It's not for me, but if they want it, we're going to have to still keep an eye on it, and I think the zoning issues may really even limit in our, in our town where it can even take place.
Okay, Mr. Krantz.
I, I oppose Measure H. I think that the trying to accommodate four dispensaries in the city of Encinitas is going to create a nightmare, and we don't need it in our community. Anybody who is inclined to smoke weed is certainly capable of, of obtaining it. I know of many people who are growing it as Prop sixty-four allows. And when I was considering that some changes because of the passage of Prop sixty-four, it was for the cultivation of marijuana, and we had a grower that was interested. Now that grower is no longer interested, and so there really is no need for the passage of Measure H. So I oppose it and would encourage the voters to vote no on that.
Thank you. Ms. Hinsey.
I will personally be voting no on Measure H, because through the visits I've had with voters during the campaign trail, many constituents are not in favor of a cannabis industry here in our city. For the city to even begin getting taxes on Measure H and the sale of cannabis here in our city, we would need to wait. we would need to wait for a certain time period, and then, then, only then we could enact our own local ordinance. So for the revenue to stay local. So that incentive isn't appealing enough, I think, for, to support this measure as written. That said, I will obviously honor the will of the people. And if the vote shows that the majority of residents support Measure H, I'm prepared to uphold the will of the people and do our very best to regulate and make sure that all of the laws surrounding it and the code compliance is, is up to par.
Thank you. And Ms. Turney.
Sure, well, again, as Alex mentioned, we have to respect the will of the voter, so it's not in my hands to decide it one way or the other. I too think that four dispensaries in our town is an overload. I have met with an attorney who helps the dispensaries get shut, set up, and he was actually explaining that there are things that the cities can do to minimize the impact, the visibility, and the obvious access to the shops. And so I would be interested in, if it does pass, in speaking with someone like that to help advise us as to how to, as how to best make people comfortable if it does pass.
Okay, thank you. And this next question is going to be our final question before your closing statements. Again, this is a long one. What do you think about the current sheriff's funding and programs, programs slash services? Do you feel we need to do more to support our sheriffs? Do you believe that we should defund the police and decriminalize violations like prostitution, trespassing, loitering, drunken disorderly in public, and public drug use? That's a mouthful. Okay, we're going to begin this time with Ms. Turney.
Hi, yes, so I'm aware of the, obviously, the terrible nationwide events that are taking place. This is, I'll use the word systemic problem in our country, I believe. However, in Encinitas, we have to keep our focus in Encinitas. And I do not support what the, I believe there's a link that was provided by some council members to something called Campaign Zero. It refers to a broken windows policy, and it does talk about decriminalizing loitering, trespassing. I would not appreciate someone going through my yard and not being able to call the police and not have them show up. So I do not support, let me back up. I don't support fixing that something, something that's not necessarily happening in our city. I would work closely with the sheriff. I know that there's a new initiative that the San Diego Deputy Sheriffs have, have put forward, and I would want to know how they're going to bring that to Encinitas and tell us where the gaps are, if they see something here at home.
Thank you. And Ms. Henze.
I do not support defunding the police in Encinitas, but I do support the transparency and accountability that our residents have been requesting. This important conversation is long overdue about systemic racism and social justice that's taking place at all levels of government. And the city council is open and encouraging that dialogue. As part of that conversation, we brought forward a public dialogue that resulted in the law enforcement forum. And it's helpful for the community, our sheriff's captain, our city staff, to learn about the unique challenges that we're facing because through that dialogue, we've learned that the county police could use more support for mental health services. They can use more support for responding to domestic violence calls. Here in the city of Encinitas, we don't have any bills on the, any laws on the books that prohibit loitering. And so, you know, that's because of a decision, Martin versus Boise, that was done at the federal court level. That wasn't a legislative action. So when the courts make a decision like that, the sheriffs have to follow it. And that means that it's not up for legislative action here in Encinitas.
Thank you. Mr. Krantz, would you respond, please?
Yes, the chaos that we've been seeing across the country as a result of clearly bad police officers has, has certainly had an effect on those of us here in Encinitas and the issues of systemic racism and, and other kind of pervasive issues related to social justice or things that need to be addressed here. And I do expect in the next term to have that conversation. We are a contract city for law enforcement. We get our services through the county, and the county sheriff is the one that is going to essentially be responsible for implementing change. So I do expect a serious conversation with county supervisors, as well as the sheriff's sheriff, to make sure that the accountability that's necessary is implemented in the years ahead. I also think that we should be doing more with social workers, partnering with sheriff's deputies in order to address issues that are related to mental health.
Thank you. Thank you. And finally, Mr. Riley.
Thank you. Full disclosure, I've been endorsed by the Deputy Sheriff's Association. And in the past, I've trained with the sheriffs and got very good quality training. And defunding, usually the first thing they go after to cut costs is training. And poor training and lack of training is actually what leads to a lot of these disasters. So I'm totally against the defunding. We're very lucky, we have very low crime, and we have some of the lowest per capita coverage out of any city. So I'd say our sheriffs are doing a really good job, and I continue to support them. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Now, before we conclude our forum with your concluding statements, I do want to direct you to our website, which is Voters Edge, I think I have it up there, votersedge.org/CA. And that's a wonderful online resource for more information about the candidates, about ballot issues, and also more detailed voting information. And all the candidates can submit their information on this website free of charge. To learn more about League of Women Voters, I'd suggest you go to my.lwv.org, and you can learn more about our organization. And finally, I want to remind you that if you have not yet registered to vote, the deadline to register is October 19th. It's a very easy process. Just go to the website sdvote.com and follow the directions. And on that website, you can also sign up to follow your ballot to its destination if you are mailing in your ballot. And so with that, we're going to now go to our closing statements, and we're going in the opposite of order than we started. So we are going to begin with Ms. Turney.
Thank you. Through my work career, I gained a thorough understanding of how complex organizations operate, and I know the various functions and how they relate to one another. And this deep knowledge is essential to have when dealing with issues that concern both the public and that involve a complex government operation such as ours. I have the temperament, experience, and competence to represent you and address your concerns. Having participated in hundreds of hours of city meetings, working alongside with residents from every corner of the city, I've learned to do more than take a staff report at face value. Oftentimes, the folks I've worked with have turned up information that city staff was unaware of that actually affected the outcome of a project. So while staff is there as a support, they are not a crutch, and you can count on me to continue to study on my own and ask the hard questions on behalf of residents. I will never sue you to remove your Prop A right to vote or try to interfere with it in any way. I will push back on state laws that seek to remove our local control. I will always take your hard questions and dig in for the answers. I will not tell you that not enough people have complained in order for something to be done. I will always put your safety above developer profits. I will not make unanimous council votes a goal. This leads to groupthink, does not lead to creative solutions, and worst of all, it short-changes the public. I will maintain complete transparency at all times. I promise never to put my own preferences and beliefs over those of the residents. That is what I call true representation, and I'm ready to get started. Please visit my website, SusanTurney4, that's the number four, encinitas.org. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Henze, we'll hear from you next.
Thank you. So I would like to close again by thanking everyone who took part in organizing this forum. And I'd like to thank all the voters who took time to hear directly from the candidates. Civic engagement carries a whole new gravity in these historic times, and I'm grateful to serve a community that still values it. 2020 has presented us with historic challenges of epic proportions. As a local government, COVID-19 has tested us in ways that very few could have ever imagined. I'm proud to serve on a city council that has risen to the challenge with competency and has kept Encinitas in the third or fourth lowest case count of COVID among the 18 cities in San Diego County. I'm a proud champion of projects that unite Encinitas around our goals of maintaining our small-town feel, even as the wider region rapidly changes around us. I deeply value our city's natural resources, and I'm proud that my voting record reflects that. I also want to leave voters with a closing thought. You only have to check social media or the news to know that our nation is sharply divided. Encinitas is no exception. There's been an erosion of civility in this community. The online attacks and divisiveness are toxic, and they're not productive. I believe that they're rooted in fear and spurred by misinformation. Over these next few weeks, I ask voters to critically think about the information they read, specifically where it's coming from and if it's getting our community closer or further away from a solution. I also urge voters to, based on your hope, to vote based on your hopes and not on your fears. Candidates who want to, candidates who want you to vote for them will, based on your fears, will tell you things are bad, and that will get worse if you don't vote for them. I reject that. And instead, I ask you to vote for me based on your hopes for the future of Encinitas because I still believe in solution-based progress for our city. If I earn your vote, I pledge to foster unity and civility as we work together to make great strides. Please vote for me, Kelly Henze, for Encinitas City Council, honor before November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Krantz.
Yes, thank you. And thanks again to the League of Women Voters and the viewers. And for the voters for giving me the opportunity to serve for two terms. It's been my honor, and I hope that I can continue to serve in representing District One. I moved here in 1960 as a tiny baby, and I've seen this city grow exponentially. And it's been very challenging. And since incorporation, the city has had a long list of infrastructure issues that need to be addressed. We have been working diligently to address those. Issues related to development continue to divide the community, and I have worked the last six years as a part of the council trying to work with, to put together a plan that the voters could support while also following state law. And you can read the review letters from the Housing and Community Development Department and find that we were directed to make adjustments to our housing plans all along the way. So I will continue to advocate for the interests of the community while also doing my best to comply with state law. And where necessary, I will challenge, and we will sue again. But in the meantime, we have never sued any of our residents. So I would ask that you continue to support my service on the council. We have accomplished a lot, and we are continuing to move forward with some very important projects. And I think that the experience that I bring to this job is really important to continue, especially in these pandemic times. So I thank you again, and I ask you for your vote in District One.
Thank you. And finally, we will hear from Mr. Riley.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody that watches this. It's very important that we are informed, and our city government is our shortest direct line to our representatives. So with that, I wouldn't be running if I felt that I would been represented and that my community was being properly served. To be very brief, my guide, my guiding principles for being on council and any decision I will make is, is it legal? Is it ethical? Is it safe? Is it what's best for the community? And is it good for the rest of our city? If we can't answer all those to the yes, it shouldn't be done. I really appreciate your time in watching this. If you have any questions, please contact me through my website. Just Google Alex Riley, Encinitas, and you should see it at the top. Thank you.
And thank you. And finally, I would like to thank and commend these candidates for their courage and their willingness to run for public office. They are truly making democracy work. Thank you, and good evening.